December fourth, twenty twenty four, public hearing. Which after we will resume with the regular monthly meeting. Purpose of the public hearing here is. Oh, actually, we have two things we have to take care of. Number one is that are we in compliance with the issues that that were brought to. Is Alex here?
Yes.
Oh, I'm. You changed your disguise.
He is here.
Yeah, Alex, so come on up and we had, I think we have what, three issues there?
Yep, everything is right in the packet as soon as you open up. Everything he sent to me is right there.
We want to confirm that's all well and good.
I believe Bill has a large map attached there and so does Blair.
All right, so the ground mound is located one hundred and twenty-five feet from the wet area.
Yes. And just a little bit over thirty feet uphill this way.
On the, okay, all right. So that's.
And I had.
Hundred and forty-five feet, that's a thirty foot difference in the elevation.
I have the county elevation map in here as well. Yes.
Yeah. Enter ten foot conduits. Okay.
Before we get too far, do you want to say the pledge?
It's the public. Well, it's the public hearing before we go into our, but before we even have the hearing, we want to make sure that these things are these are done. That we had a, we had a couple, a couple, three questions from the last and and we're also dealing with Central Hudson now, right?
Yes, and those that you're looking at are the two utility applications.
Okay, you're good. Good. So does anyone have any questions? Or any, anyone want to look at the paperwork that we have up here or have any? Did we get all responses from neighbors?
Yeah, we have all the cards.
Okay.
And nobody said anything.
Okay.
Got all the receipts.
Okay.
And I gave you guys a copy of the receipts too.
Okay, nice, there you go. Appreciate your diligence, but all is really, really good.
No problem.
All right. We're going to give a few minutes here. I mean, you have any other, any other comments yourself, Alex, or anything? Anybody here on the board have any questions, any further questions for anything?
How, how large will it be, like feet wise?
Um, I, it, um, I have the square footage and I'm just pulling up the so west to east, it'll be eighty-five feet, half an inch. And north to south, it'll be sixteen feet, nine and a quarter with a total square footage of sixteen hundred and twenty-nine.
Okay, that is not the number that I have. I have fifteen hundred and seventy-six point five square feet for the trouble. Has anything changed thus?
No, I don't think so. Where did that?
From somewhere, I swear.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I had, but can you tell it to me again because I'll have to change the.
Yes, I apologize for that. It's sixteen hundred twenty-nine point five six square feet.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah, I wonder where that came from. I wonder.
I'm sure I pulled it from an email.
Okay.
That the square footage, square footage footprint?
Yes.
Twenty-nine and then is it fifteen and change the actual array?
I'm unsure with that fifteen number.
I want to find it right now.
Okay.
The array is going to have voids in between.
Yeah.
Then they just be. Yep.
Okay, it's only X amount of square feet, but I know, I know I pulled it from.
Yeah.
I just pulled out of there.
Yeah.
So now the wet page, one five seven.
Yeah, that's the resolution. I pulled that information from. Somewhere.
I don't know, I.
What do we find with the hundred year floodplain? This hundred year floodplain question in the normal assessment form.
That was, that was negative.
It says, project site located a hundred year floodplain, yes.
Uh, that's because there is a one hundred year floodplain on the property, but the installation site itself is not within it. Um, I had provided a floodplain map from FEMA in the initial application.
They found the square footage number came from. It looks like the original denial letter from our code enforcement officer in October thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
They should be able to current one.
Huh?
Okay, update resolution.
I will, yeah, yeah, I'll do it personally unless you want me to do it right now.
Pencil it in.
Okay.
And I think we I think we held off on the part two, was it? I think we hold off on completing it when we got the was it a question, the second question? Something we did not check, something we did not complete. I want to squeeze. You got it.
Now don't be breaking my chair.
This is yours.
That's nice.
Get you awake. Okay, we'll look and make that iteration and check that off. What'd it go to?
Sixteen twenty-nine point five six.
Oh, you know what? I think that might have been, was the language that it was fifteen hundred or was it above? Because I remember when we first started this project, it was before it, the zoning code had just changed.
Find it again.
Sorry about that, because I was just wondering if that, I can't remember now, but if that had been like a square footage threshold for needing site plan review, which is why we had gone to the planning board initially, but I don't know, I guess I'm just trying to puzzle.
Right, right, man. Probably because the rate size, twenty-nine thousand.
Right.
Eighty-five is what it was.
Yeah, it was twenty-five, yeah.
Yeah.
So that would have been.
It wasn't before though, actually, before the code change, it wasn't based on kilowatts. I think it, I think it was. But either way.
Yeah, that's not it. That's not. Good. Make a motion to close the public hearing. I'll second. Well, yeah, there we, it should be at least thirteen and sixteen.
All right, now I make a motion, Alex, close the public hearing.
Second motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we got a resolution for us here, granting, denying an area of variance for Castleman Solar. Whereas Castleman Solar, representing David Manzini, wishing to construct a ground mount solar array on parcel bearing tax number fourteen dot zero zero dash three dash seventeen dot one at four twenty-six Hill Press Road, Anticroy, New York, submitted a building permit application to the building department for replacement of a ground mount and solar array of twenty-nine point six three kilowatts DC to, uh, second tier grant, ground mount solar array, which measures one thousand five hundred and seventy-six point five square feet in size. We, oh, we did change that, right?
Yeah. Sixteen twenty-nine point five six.
Which measures sixteen hundred twenty-nine of feet and point five six square feet in size. And whereas application, application was denied by code enforcement officer Jordan and advocate referred to the zoning board of appeals pursuant to section one eleven definitions, solar energy systems, see tier three solar energy systems are systems that are not included in the list for tier one and tier two solar energy systems, and this is the ground mounted solar energy system is in excess of the twenty-five kilowatt allowed under tier two. And whereas Castleman Solar, representing David Manzini, submitted a required variance application at the November sixth, twenty twenty-four zoning board of appeals meeting, seeking relief from the twenty-five kilowatt requirement to allow for the excess of an additional four point six three kilowatts to be granted. And whereas public hearing having been duly published in the Times Union was held on said application at the New Baltimore Town Hall on December fourth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas public hearing was held on December fourth, twenty twenty-four with copies of post office certified mail notification slips having been received, accepted by the board. And whereas after further discussion by the members of the town of New Baltimore Zoning Board of Appeals at this December four, twenty twenty-four regular monthly meeting, it was resolved that this action be granted a negative or positive declaration for the purposes of secret and it be further resolved that the variance be approved with conditions or no conditions. And I would propose that we would grant a positive declaration for this variance and the variance be approved with no conditions. Anyone second that motion?
We need to change the secret. We need to change this.
I'm sorry.
We need to make a change to this. Before we go ahead and approve that.
Yes.
Which question?
We didn't make that official.
Is that the number?
Which question?
So on the environmental short assessment form, part one.
This is not a positive secret.
It was, it was, for some reason, this was marked, yes. And under what number was that?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. That's why I can't find it. So under number sixteen is a project site located in the one hundred year floodplain. And that was erroneously marked yes. And we're, we're making the, we're making that a no under article, under section sixteen there. And it's been, it's been confirmed that that was marked incorrect. And it does, the project itself does not exist on the, on a one hundred year floodplain, which was verified with, with the additional evidence that Mr. Manz, Alex has brought to the board here, Alex Martin. So, so with that, with that change and clarification, I would like to.
Then come down. Let's start, now we're going to start the regular meeting first before we do that.
Oh, before, yeah.
Before we prove it.
Yeah, that's true. That's under the public, yeah, that's under the public meeting. Okay. Excuse me, Alex.
That's good.
So we have a, do we have a motion to close the public meeting?
Yep. Yeah, do that.
Okay, and then.
Pleasure, Lee.
Okay. Okay, so would you rise with me for the pleasurable evening? A pleasurable evening to the flag.
For the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So have we all read the minutes from the November sixth, twenty twenty-four regular reading?
Yes.
And so I would make a, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And so we're back to our resolution. Resolution has been read. And we would like to make a, we'd like to make a motion now to grant, to grant this positive declaration for this, for this variance and that the variance be approved with no conditions. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Well said, Alex.
Thank you very much.
Keep digging.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Drive safe.
Yeah, thank, thank you for all the material. Really, and you know, and the presentation was, you know, it's very helpful, Alex. Appreciate it all. Yeah.
Thank you for seeing clarity.
Yeah, yeah, good luck. So new, so we have no old business. But we do have new business. And so we have before is Randy Lent looking for a variance application. And you brought this to the planning board, right?
Yeah, I brought it to the planning board. It really wasn't, we didn't know what the code, I, I don't know what we knew or what we didn't know, but now the letter that came from the refusal from the zone, from the planning board states of the offset from the front of the property, but there's also a problem with the offset to the right side of the property. I believe the offset to the front side of the property is not a problem. I talked to the surveyor and Hadley Drive is considered a user road, which, which was explained to me means that the town of Baltimore has a right of way on it, but the property owners retain the ownership of that road. I didn't know any of this until I talked to him and he says, so my setback is supposed to be forty feet. And I think I got, I don't know, I got fifty-three feet.
I think you guys got a big map?
No, no.
Oh, yeah. So my offset from this, my offset from the road was fifty-three feet. That's to the corner of the road, so another whatever, I'm about fifty-five, sixty feet from the center of the road. If that's, if what Charles Height is correct and it's a user road, it's not actually, I guess a lot of town in the Baltimore roads are user roads. Yeah.
Forty feet from the front.
Yeah. And the other aspect is the setback from Shelley West property, which is three point three feet. And I did this, I didn't know if this mattered or didn't matter, but I had her doing it anyway. I have a letter for her stating that she doesn't care. I got.
There could be another owner there at some point that may care.
Yeah, yeah, there better not be because my father wanted that left. My father said, you better leave that in her name. Yeah, I know, I know. Yeah. So basically, what was there was a fourteen by sixty-four trailer with a twelve by thirty-five four season room. What's going there is a twenty-seven by sixty-four double wide and a thirty by thirty-two garage. It's going to go up a couple hundred square feet. The bedrooms are going to stay the same. The bathroom is going to be two. Septic system is fine with what I got. I talked to an engineer. The well is fine. Well, the well and septic has never been an issue. It's been in since nineteen seventy-four and nothing's ever been an issue. There was a family of four living there, so it was never, right now it's going to be me and my wife. Well, like you said, that can always change.
Plant, plant board have that, we're, we're looking at the area variance.
Yeah, you're looking at the setbacks.
Well, you're a hundred feet from septic.
Yeah, well, that's, it's been there, yeah, it's fifty feet, but.
That's not our issue.
Yeah, that's already, that's been like that for fifty years.
The garage, though, that, that's, that's a must on there or is that a, I'd like it there?
Well, I got no choice. That's where I, what I really wanted to do is move the whole thing over towards fifty-one. But the well stops me. So I moved the house over as much as I could to the well. So it wouldn't interrupt the driveway. So the well is right at the corner of the driveway. And which is fifty foot from the septic. But that, I moved it as much as I could. That's why I figured I'd talk to my sister, make sure that wasn't going to be an issue, but the setbacks on everywhere else is fine. It's just that, her piece. Yeah, believe me, if I could, I got plenty. I got fifty feet on the other side.
Right, right.
But unfortunately, the well's in the way. I don't believe the setback's a problem in the front. The only setback problem is the right side.
Yeah, with the garage.
With the garage, yeah, yeah.
So square footage wise.
Square footage wise.
For the, now for the.
For the living space.
For the manufactured home coming in.
Yeah, it's twenty-seven by sixty-four.
What's the square footage on it anyway? What's the increase in square?
Twenty-seven times. The square, seventeen twenty-eight. And then you're going to take sixty-four times fourteen. Eighty-six. Times twelve. So eight ninety-six plus four twenty.
Thirteen sixteen.
So whatever the difference there is.
Was the original seventeen one? Seventeen twenty-eight. What's the four twenty?
That's the four season room in front. So the, the original four season room in front was twelve by thirty-five, which was closer to the main road.
Four hundred and twelve foot. Four hundred and twelve feet, four twelve, yes.
Set with the garage or without the garage?
That's without the garage, that's living space.
So then you're adding the garage to it too.
Yeah.
Which is giving you the issue with the.
That's the setback, yeah, and I'm putting, I'm putting all the water, I'm going to heat the garage and that's where the well is going to go in. Everything's going to go in the garage.
Randy, actually, you know, had you left the garage off of this, I mean, this is just my, you know, that is not a substantial change inside of structure.
No.
You could have, you, you could have.
I could have did it without a variance. Oh, yeah, 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 I know. I know, I could have did it without a variance.
As Craig says, the garage is a, is a stick.
Yeah, yeah.
But you need a garage.
I'm, I've lived, I've lived in a garage and I'm not doing it again.
I agree.
Oh, you, you're going to live here?
Yeah, yeah, it's my house. Yeah, it's me. My sister lives next door and I'm going to live there.
Oh, she lives over in the brick house?
Yeah, my father made a stipulation years ago. Do not sell this house. I want it left in the family and I'm not going to be the one selling it. My sister lives in it and I think one of her kids are going to live in it after that, but we, that was the stipulation when he died and I'm not going to break that. There's no way I'm doing it. But yeah, my, that trailer was my grandfather and grandmother's. And then my sister lived there with her three kids for five years and I lived there for a year when I built my house. So basically, my house is for sale. I'm going to move across the street. I don't want land. I don't want nothing. Matter of fact, that's too much to mo. I don't want nothing. I'm going to concrete the back so there's no lawn and then you'll have a little tiny patch in the front. I go to Myrtle Beach.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, Randy, I mean, this would almost be a no brainer without the garage on there.
I know.
Well, you're making it a self inflicted.
But, but if, but if you want the garage on there, I'll tell you right now, it's like, I'm going to have to do a lot of homework on this.
Okay.
We can't, we can't sell nothing right here now.
Well, I didn't think you were going to leave that. I mean, the only one that was impacted was her, so I figured I'd get that for you.
I'll, I'll do a lot of digging. I mean, we, as a zoning board of appeals, we got a lot of leeway in what we can grant and what we, you know, but we have parameters to stay in. And, you know, before I make any of those decisions, I got to do like a lot of homework and then just.
And, you know, before I make any of those decisions, I gotta do like a lot of homework and then just.
Well, I know. That's why I know. That's why I warned everybody about it before it was going on. I knew I knew the garage was gonna be a sticking point. I'm the one to put that line in there. I'm the one to separate the house because the house and the the trailer was together. I I in two thousand AP and I separated them and I drew that line.
You made it a nonconforming lot at that point, but we proved it.
It was nonconforming because well, between the house and the trailer, it wasn't four acres. Yeah.
With the nonconforming lots per code, you can't get much bigger than what was granted back in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. So that's what runs into the other issue is with the.
And I can't find that.
Well, see, actually, we have we have the we have the authority to grant the increase in the size of the building.
Right.
The garage puts a lot of complication.
Because she may not be the only one there, no matter.
And you guys.
No disrespect, but it doesn't matter what your father said.
What um? I mean, the other thing I could have did, and I really don't wanna do that, is do a line lot adjustment, which to get the fifteen feet, but.
Then we still have two nonconforming lots because I don't think that's two acres.
No, none of them are two acres, neither one. Yeah, neither one or two.
Oh, that's one six.
Yeah, yeah. I can't. You keep I I keep hearing nonconforming lots, but I can't find where.
Two acres.
Well, I know that. I know that, but I can't find where an existing lot that has something on it. You can't put something else on it because it's not. I don't.
You can't put something new on it. There was a variance for that that lot, the smaller lot, but you have to stay within that footprint that the variance was granted on that initial lot. You can't just can't build it.
They they are fairly adamant that they don't want an increase in 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 nonconformance. Noncompliance and and, you know, and we we have we can we can make adjustments on those also. But I mean, there's limits to this.
Right.
You know, there's limits to this and one of the things they really wanna see from an applicant, Randy, is. Is a a real effort to try to, you know, not get a bear a variance.
Well, that's.
If it's not necessary.
That's why I wish I could move the house over, but unfortunately, my father put the wall in a bad spot.
Well, you could probably put a bid on Walfardo's bank right now. They're pretty.
Yeah, that this isn't. Yeah, these are not what's on the tax map though anymore. This isn't current, is it?
Yes.
Because there's another name. You look at the tax map, there's another name on that.
Well, that's we just printed that off this week. Charles Height just printed that off.
Two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, he just he just.
Okay, but yeah.
I went up this.
Somebody owns that.
Somebody owns that, yeah.
Where's that?
The house behind you.
Oh, yeah, it is. Yeah, yeah, that used to be diesel. There's been a house on that for well, my whole life.
Oh, okay.
There's a house behind me.
They're all different names now.
Well, it's it's a change. This was actually a subdivision back in the day, right?
Yeah, my father owned it all and then he sold some of it off and then he brought his grand his parents down. Yeah, he used to own across the street.
I mean, the state of New York even tells us two acre lots. That was a that was something they pulled out with the air.
Yeah, how do hamlets get away with it?
Well.
Because they were there.
Their grandfather did.
Well, that's why. That's why you think mine was grandfather and it's been there fifty years. The only thing I'm doing is adding a garage and three hundred square foot.
That isn't the problem. The problem is that the side, the setbacks, that's a side. It's not that you put another trailer in there.
No, it's it's the right side setback.
So you're able to do that, yeah.
You have well and septic, you're on point three acres, have a well and septic. You know, can Charlie height or an engineer do a fifty percent septic increase?
I don't need to do an increase because it goes by bedrooms. I'm fine.
I know that, but if you were, if if that leach field failed, you need to have another spot where there's where you could have a leach field on that property. I don't I don't see an engineer putting that on that lot. And that's not that might not happen in your lifetime, might not happen in my lifetime, but it could happen down the road. And there's not a spot.
The well is with it closer than a hundred feet from septic too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, you sell this house in twenty thirty years, someone buys it, septic goes bad, they're basically they're they're out of luck. You know, where are you gonna put another septic on?
Yeah, yeah, you're way too far out. I mean, you can. We can talk this all day long about multiple locations up and down fifty-one.
You wanna know why there's a two acre minimum? That is why.
We're not talking about a two acre minimum right now. We don't have that.
We're talking about three foot setback.
Right, yeah, I don't care about the minimum. I we're we're dealing with a setback problem and I didn't know. I mean, I really want a garage because I never not had one, but.
Understandable.
Yeah, I mean.
Understandable. So like I say, you know, Randy, I'll just, you know, I'm gonna have to do some digging and pull pulls and whatever and, you know, and. Get some.
Well, I also think it makes a difference that the the right hand side, that's your sister.
Yeah, it's my that's where I grew up.
And she's okay with it.
Yeah, that's why that's why I did this.
Bearing on our decision too.
Oh, sure.
That's why I did that because I brought her out there. I showed her everything and she didn't really care, but. But again, we can talk about selling a house or her selling a house or whatever. Who knows? I could die tomorrow, no?
Sounds like Yellowstone's.
Yeah, I I mean, this whole end of the road has been in our family forever, so I don't, you know.
But we do have it's it's our obligation to the town to.
Yeah.
Prepare for the future as well, you know, in case something happens. We got we have to be responsible for that as well.
We have. We always have the town's best interest in mind.
Believe me, I wish I could move it. That's why I pushed it. I pushed it more to the left because there's I don't even know what's there. I think it's like fifty-five sixty feet to the left.
Well, Randy, I can do some homework.
All right.
And in the meantime, maybe you can come up with a plan B or come up with or maybe talk to one of your neighbors about. Getting a small amount of land to decide.
It's really the only the only thing I could possibly do is do a line lot adjustment on my sister, but that's taking a little more land from her. I can get the fifteen foot setback from her. Because you're talking about another twelve feet. Which I can probably do that. I was hoping I didn't have to do that because it we can't. Neither one of us can use any of it anyway. We we don't use it anyway, but it's not usable. Nothing. No, we never used it our whole life.
That wouldn't be. I mean, you can angle it and it's not gonna encroach on anything she has there.
No, well, basically what I did is I did a straight line on an angle. All I gotta do is do a straight line down into an angle. Like Charlie said, it's nothing to do it. I just didn't wanna do that expense.
That'd be that'd be a quick thing in the.
Yeah.
It almost seems like it'd be the easiest fix.
Right.
Yeah, well, I wanted to see what you guys would think and see if I can go this route and see if it really mattered three point. I know it's three point three feet to my sister's house, but. And it's not even close to her house.
No, it's a property one.
Yeah. And I haven't discussed that. I I thought about the lot lot line adjustment. I really didn't wanna go that way, but. But.
That's very expensive to do.
I don't know. I I mean, I did it when I built the propane plant down there, but everything was more complicated back then because people made it more complicated. My neighbor gave me a quarter of an acre of land, so Charles Height just went down and did it and it was all. One big price for me because of the crap I was going through. I don't know what it would cost.
I mean, this is all recent surveys. Everything's there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's all done. He did it all. I did this in two thousand eighteen. He don't even have to go out there. You probably do a rented map. I don't know what it would cost. But I wanted to go this route first and see if that three point three feet mattered or didn't matter.
It matters. Matters a lot. Unfortunately, there's there's three codes specifically that talk about variance properties in the past and. And sticking to specifically mentioning lot line or outside. Nonconforming lot comply with applicable required setbacks for previous lots.
Well, that's why I was doing. That's why I was doing a variance because I knew it wasn't conforming.
But we I don't think we can grant the variance on that because the only way to grant it would be a hardship and I don't see a hardship.
Well, you don't get. There's not a hardship clause under the area variance. There is under use variance, but not area variance.
But what's going against now? You gotta fight the codes. There's three codes saying that.
Well, I mean, so here's the deal. So with codes, there are regulations. And so there's times that we have to make variations on the regulations, exceptions to them. Because that's what we're here for. And if they're reasonable, if they if and if they're not gonna affect neighbors. They're and it's spelled out in the code. And, you know, and we have we have the we have the leeway to do this. It's just.
Yeah, the the property that we're dealing with, neither one of us uses it, so it doesn't really matter to it. That's that's what we both talked about.
You know, and, you know, making exceptions for an occupied structure is one thing. Making exceptions for a garage and unoccupied addition to this thing, that's a whole nother complication is what I'm saying.
Yeah, all right.
And that's why I'm saying the hardship is not there to grant the variance required. We know.
It's self inflicted, as I say.
Correct.
Which it can be correct. It could be corrected. There may be some money involved, but.
Yeah.
Fix everything with money.
And like you say, again, you know. So many of these guidelines, Randy, is that, you know, I mean, you 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 basically have to be at your wit's end where you have no other options left. Before, you know, they want us to really, you know, do variances, you know, and, you know, and. You know, and you you got a recourse here, the.
Oh, maybe. Oh, that's my sister. Maybe. Yeah.
I'll do homework on your plan A.
You wanna take that?
Yes. And.
You do homework, I'll do homework and we'll meet in the middle, see what. That's why I wanted to see before you've been taking that route, I wanted to see. What we can do. I know three point three feet kind of sucks. What's that? I could.
I know. Nobody wants.
No, well, because I'm putting all my everything's gonna be in there now because I don't like stuff outside for the water systems and stuff. Yeah, that's why I was gonna do that and I was gonna do a. It was gonna be a story and a half. That's where I was gonna store everything. I was gonna put the water and everything in the garage in the back. That's why I was trying to make it big enough for two cars and all that crap because I'm going from what I got to that.
Yeah.
But. All right, so we'll we'll be in touch.
Charlie, see what it would take, right?
Well, I'll talk to Charlie. I gotta talk to my sister first, but.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, because I need approximately twelve feet. Yeah.
And you probably don't know where the line is now.
I do because it's new.
I mean, you know, but you don't say, oh, that's your part and this is my part.
Yeah, I well, yeah, oh, yeah, there's. Yeah, it's all.
Yeah, so twelve feet's not gonna make any difference.
No, neither one of us are using it, so it doesn't really matter. So, all right.
It's not like it cuts off her backyard or play.
No, yeah. Yeah, she's dumb. My kid sold mine.
Hey, everybody, we wanna help you.
All right. All right, I'll talk to you. I'll talk to them.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You have any questions? Contact us and, you know.
Yeah, well, let's find out what you can find out.
Keep in touch and I'll let you know.
All right. All right, sounds good. Okay, so if she does do the twelve feet, what do I do then? Do I just go back to the planning board?
For lot line adjustment?
Yeah, she. Yeah, you would have to get a lot line adjustment through the planning board, yeah.
And that would be it though, right?
Because the variances are already there. The variances are already there. They should be. And if not, if they can't handle it, then they're denying and send it back to us.
We go in circles, yeah, it's like a circle.
Well, they're gonna have.
Yeah, I mean, I know they have. I I know I heard they had a problem with the garage also being closed. That's why they sent it to us.
Yeah, that's why they sent it, yeah.
So, yeah.
All right, so, all right, thank you.
Okay.
We'll see you. See you. I'll probably talk to you tomorrow. I hope I don't go. Hope it looks good.
Hey, listen, I hope not. Merry Christmas.
Same to you. We'll see you.
Any other comments?
Well, we got one more motion to make.
Make motion adjourned.
I second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.
No, should cut down on the fence fence this time.
Yes.